Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, July 11th, the time of 2022, and the time is 5:31 PM. And I will turn it over our Tourist City Clerk for a whole call.
Mayor, Councilmember Barber.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lykens.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Storseth. And Councilmember.
Here.
All seven present in the counter floor.
Okay, great. Thank you. If you would all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Before we begin this council meeting, we would like to recognize that we are gathered on not only the ancestral and traditional lands of the Skowabwch band of the Pilip tribe of Indians, but also on the site of one of the largest and longest standing historic villages of the people, the original inhabitants of the Gig Harbor area. And council, are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a move, ma'am. Do we accept the consent agenda?
That good.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, thank you. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, council. So this evening, we have a presentation. And if you will give me just a moment. I would like to turn this over to Lee Rodenberg to say a few words. In just a moment, Lee, I'm going to call on you in just a moment here. This is a wonderful organization within our community, and it is my honor to read a proclamation this evening. Whereas the Gig Harbor Sportsman's Club was formally incorporated as a non-for-profit in 1947 by a group of Gig Harbor residents, many of whom were descended from Gig Harbor's pioneering immigrant families and veterans of World War II. And whereas the Sportsman's Club has owned the land where the club now stands since its inception, constructing the clubhouse in 1950, and continuously adding improvements, including Olympic event-aligned rifle and pistol ranges, trap fields, and archery ranges. And whereas the Sportsman's Club has grown its membership from an initial 125 members to over 2,000 current members, including 500 family memberships. And whereas the Sportsman's Club performs a vital service to the community by providing education and safety trainings, with over 200 firearms trainings provided annually, self-defense training, and collaboration with the Well-A armed Women Organization, and training over 4,000 people in Washington State's Required Hunter Education Program. And whereas the Sportsman's Club considers itself a service organization by holding many community events and fundraisers each year for worthy causes and providing scholarships to high school students. And whereas the city values and endorses the Sportsman's Club's mission statement to provide a facility and organization that safely, enjoyably, and economically allows our members, guests, and our community to participate in the shooting sports and fellowship of the club. Now therefore, I, Tracy Markley, Mayor of the City of Gig Harbor, recognized July 11th, 2022, as the 75th anniversary of the Gig Harbor Sportsman's Club, and encourage all residents to join me in celebrating this monumental occasion, thanking the members of the club for their positive impact on the city throughout the last 75 years. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Gig Harbor to be affixed this 11th day of July, 2022. And Lee, I'm going to turn it over to you to say a few words.
Well, I think the proclamation says it very well. So on behalf of the over 2,200 men, women, and children that are members of the club, I want to thank you and the city for recognizing this milestone in the club's history. And to thank you also for recognizing the 75 years that Gig Harbor Sportsman's Club has been an asset to this community by its charitable and educational services, and along with its preservation of wildlife habitat. So again, thank you very much, Mayor Markley, council, and citizens of Gig Harbor.
Thank you, Lee. And I will have a signed proclamation to present to you to pass on to the club when I see you next time. Councilmember Storseth. Oh, I can't, we can't hear you. You're unmuted, but we can't hear you at all. You might have to log out and log back in maybe, and then we can call on you. So sorry, we can't hear you at all. Gosh, technology's great when it works, but when it doesn't, it's kind of a pain. So we'll see if he logs back on. Any other councilmembers wishing to make any comments or have any questions while we're waiting for Councilmember Storseth? Okay, well, we will move on, and then when he comes back on, I'll call on him again. So for my mayor's report this evening, I wanted to mention the blood drive that we just had. Our wonderful city wellness team coordinated the city's first ever blood drive in council chambers. This was called on July 1st and July 5th. And throughout this event, which was open to the public, the city registered 64 donors and collected 54 units of blood. And even more special is that 22 first-time donors participated in this event, so that was really awesome. The donations from this event will go to support our local hospitals who are in dire need of blood. And special thanks to Michelle Thomas in our Community Development Department, who was instrumental in organizing and scheduling and implementing this event. This was a really proud moment for Gig Harbor. We hope to have them back again very soon and make this a regular place where people can come and give life-giving blood. So that was amazing. And then last Thursday, I was honored to present an update, a city update, to the Gig Harbor Chamber Luncheon at the Canterwood Country Club. And it was so nice to be in person and connect with people that I've only seen on Zoom for the last two and a half years. So it was really nice to meet some of our business owners, past, present, new, up-and-coming businesses. It was just really great to be there. I'm looking forward to sharing, having more opportunities to share updates about what's happening with our city and getting to know more and more of our businesses. So that was, that's my mayor's report. I see you are back on, Councilmember Storseth. Let's see, let's try this again and see. No, we still can't hear you. Gosh. Josh, do you have any suggestions for how to maybe fix?
There's nothing I can do on my end. It's a connection with his microphone that's not working.
Okay.
You could possibly plug in a headset that has a microphone built in, see if that helps, or use the call-in number. And join by phone for audio.
Okay, well, we'll see what we can do. And I will, I will move on for now, Councilmember Storseth. I'll call on you again when you put your hand up. We'll go to the City Administrator Report. Katrina.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. It's great to be with you this evening. Have four quick updates. Number one, just wanted to shout out the wonderful Downtown Waterfront Alliance. They received their accreditation again this year. It allows them to have full Main Street status. And really, the wonderful flower baskets and the farmers market are just a couple of examples of things that the Downtown Waterfront Alliance does, led by Mary Demarest. And they are a wonderful city partner, so wanted to give them a quick shout out. If you'd like to give them congratulations, that would be great. Number two, we are in election season, and there are signs on the side of the road. And so I wanted to let everyone know, I sent this out in the weekly update last week, that Adam Blodgett is officially our full-time code enforcement officer as of last Thursday. And so that is wonderful news for all things code enforcement and for sign sweeps. A sign sweep was conducted two weeks ago, and as you can probably see, driving around, there are still signs in, or are now additional signs in places where they should not be. So staff will be conducting another sign sweep this week. And special thanks to Jeff Langhelm, having the crew go out and have proper trucks with lights to allow them to safely meander into the roundabouts and medians along Borden. So we will get those taken care of, and that should reduce emails regarding signs in our inboxes. If you have any questions about that, feel free to let Carl or me know. The third item is that ordinance 1448, which was the temporary suspension of the special use provisions for the COVID emergency, that is still in effect 90 days past the, when the statewide emergency, COVID emergency ends. And so we've been getting numerous calls about several businesses who still have tents or things of that nature utilizing this ordinance. And so I wanted to notify council that that ordinance is still in effect, and it runs for 90 days past the statewide emergency ending. And if you have questions about that, feel free to call Carl DeCemus or myself, and we can help with those things. And then lastly, to finish on a good note, and I apologize, councilmembers, if this takes some of your thunder from the end of the meeting, but I just wanted to state that after many, many years of being in a much-too-small facility for the great community need, the Fish Food Bank received occupancy on their building. And they will be having a ribbon cutting tomorrow at 4:00 PM that I think some of us will be at. But I wanted to let the community know as well as council, this is a huge thing for our community, such a need, and the food bank does so much for so many people. So Waterfront Alliance and Fish Food Bank doing really great things for us within our city, things that the city does not have to do, so we really want to shout out our community partners. And that concludes my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes. City Administrator Newtson, I had a question about the people or the merchants that have tents and things like that now that are out. Did any of them try to get a permanent exemption, or are they all still under the ordinance?
They're all still under the ordinance. None of them have come forward for permanent permitting.
Thank you.
Okay, great. And Councilmember Storseth, did you want to try one more time before we move on? Still no, still no luck. Okay, perfect.
I've emailed him my phone number. He can call in if he wants to.
Okay, great.
Call him.
I think he's going to call in, but we will, we'll move on to new business one. I just want to make sure we can hear his voting, and maybe he'll just have to raise his hand or do thumbs up or thumbs down. Okay, awesome. So moving on to new business, item number one is the first reading.
Mayor, we would need to move on to the public comment on non-agenda items.
Thank you, thank you. I think I might have done this last week, too. It's, maybe I need more space between. I just seem to go right straight on. Thank you. Yes, I do not want to forget about public comment. I will now open the public comment on non-agenda items. Josh, were there any emails, written comments received?
No, there are no written comments for any items on this meeting.
Okay, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak that is on the call tonight? You can press the raise hand button or star nine on your phone. Okay, let's see, I see one. And that's caller 874. And if you would, please state your full name and address for the record, and you will have exactly three minutes. I have been a little off on cutting it right off at three minutes, but we're going to be sticking really tight to that timeframe. So I don't want to be rude and interrupt, but I will at the end of three minutes. So thank you so much for being here to comment, and go ahead, caller ending in 874.
Good evening, Mayor Markley. How are you this evening?
Good, how are you?
Good. Can the council also hear me?
I'm seeing heads nodding, yes.
Okay, this is Thomas Wick, Hunt Street Northwest. And I am calling this evening to ask you and the ladies and gentlemen of the council to assist me with obtaining and completing the request for public records that I submitted on September 25th, 2020. Currently, the City of Gig Harbor has $300 in their possession to pay for at least partial completion of that request for public records. I would also ask that the current council and yourself, Mayor Markley, reconsider ordinance 1465 and actually repeal that. That ordinance was passed prior to the completion of that request for public records dated September 25th, 2020. And a brief summary of that ordinance is if the City of Gig Harbor deems it a fishing expedition or if they deem it overly broad or burdensome, it's basically backburnered, and the records are not produced. And as you know from my email today, I reached out to your new city administrator requesting a meeting to sit down and discuss that request for public records. It remains outstanding, and I have not received a response. So I would ask that the council please give ordinance 1465 a hard second look, and please consider repealing that ordinance. I'd appreciate that, and thank you for allowing me to comment this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wick. I see our next hand raised looks like Charlie Glock Jackson. And even if I say your name, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Charlie Glock Jackson, Gig Harbor Arts Commission. Can, I'm assuming you can hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Tomorrow, you will receive in your mailboxes at the City Hall an invitation to attend Peninsula Art League's annual, back-to-being annual Gig Harbor Art Festival, which happens this weekend in downtown Gig Harbor with 1,000 bows, and many thanks to the City of Gig Harbor for your continued, very important, very much appreciated, support. We have 107 artists and craftspeople from throughout the Pacific Northwest who will be showing and selling their wonderful work. We will have a literary corner, we'll have children's activities, we'll have food trucks, and good times shall be had by all. And we are also are going to have a show of artwork by Peninsula Art League members. The festival is put on by Peninsula Art League, in case you're not aware. And their members are going to be having a show of some of the recent work that they've done. And you will receive an invitation to the private awards reception, which will happen Saturday evening. But you don't just come to the awards reception, you come to the whole festival, and you have a great time, and you spend money and buy things and support our artists, and you're ever so glad that you live in Gig Harbor. So please do come, and this is the return of the art festival after a two-year COVID-induced absence. We are thrilled to be back, thrilled with the city's support, and thrilled to see your faces downtown this weekend.
Thank you so much. I know I am very excited to attend this weekend. I've been looking forward to this for two years, so this is going to be great. Anyone else from the public that wishes to speak by pressing star nine on your phone or the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen? Okay, not seeing any other hands. I will close the public comment. Thank you to our city administrator for reminding me, and thank you so much to everybody that came and gave comments. I think our timer's still going. So now we will move on to new business item number one. First reading of ordinance 1491, granting Verizon Wireless franchise. This is going to return for a second reading, and this report will be our Public Works Director, Jeff Langhelm.
Eric, if I can interrupt for just a moment. Sorry, Jeff. I think Councilmember Storseth is online with us on the phone now, so if he needs to talk.
Oh, okay, perfect.
You can use your screen, raise your hand button, and then you can speak over the telephone. Yep.
Okay, yes, okay. Did you, did you want to say anything now, or do you want to wait?
I'll just wait for comments at the end, but thank you. I've been able to hear everything, but I know that's painful. So I've got the laptop going. I can see everything, and I called in from my phone, so.
Okay. I'm glad we got you situated. Thank you. All right, go ahead, Director Langhelm.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Just one clarification. The staff is actually asking for this ordinance to be adopted at first reading.
Oh, yes.
That's okay. Just wanted to start out with that, so they could keep that in the back of their mind when you're listing this. But unfortunately, Bri Ellis is not available today to present this. But she did provide a very good study session report back in April, the April 14th study session on the same topic, Stormwater Source Control Program. This is a program that's required by our Phase 2 stormwater permit that you're all probably very familiar with. If this ordinance is adopted, it will create a source control program that establishes an inventory of businesses, creates an inspection program for those businesses, develops an enforcement policy if they're not abiding by the requirements, and it provides for staff training. The ordinance simply adds a new subsection to Chapter 1420 of the Miss Code. This chapter is known as the Stormwater Management Code. By adding the language that's proposed in Section 1 of the ordinance, will make everything that's in the permit for Phase 2 permit ease enforceable. And so we are asking for this to be adopted at first reading due to the requirement of this ordinance needing to be effective as of August 1st. We realize that if we were to have a second reading on July 25th, that would not allow for the effective date to occur on or before August 1st. So that's why we're asking for that special consideration. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
My apologies, Jeff. I've got a new agenda and forgot to put my notes on it from our meeting this morning. So thank you for reminding me about that. Any clarifying questions from council on this? Councilmember Rodenberg.
Just one, Director Langhelm, there's no physical ramifications of this or consideration, but yet there's training involved. Is that just now, no cost, or how's that work?
Well, the training is, we are providing for this, is to train staff within city staff itself. And it's, but also there is training available through Department of Ecology, but where it's not at a cost to the city that I've been aware of.
Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I will open the public comment on this agenda item. Josh, were there any written comments submitted?
No written comments for this item.
Okay. I will open it up to the public to speak, and I see caller ending in 874. Go ahead, and just a reminder to state your full name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Yes, Mayor Markley, ladies and gentlemen of the council, this is Thomas Wick again, Hunt Street Northwest. Can you tell me the ordinance number? I missed it.
It's 1491.
Okay. So I have, this is a problem. So I was hoping the council will, I know Director Langhelm wants the council to push the gas pedal and adopt that, this ordinance this evening. I would ask that the council delay approving this this evening and ask some questions. The council just presented this as ordinance 1491. And according to your agenda that's printed and published, it says move to approve ordinance 1488. But the ordinance on the city's agenda is ordinance 1490. So we have three different ordinance numbers. Mayor Markley, we have 1491 that you just confirmed, 1488, which is documented, and 1490, all for the same ordinance. And the bigger concern is that under Section 3 within the ordinance itself, it carves out a specific section about correction of errors. It specifically talks about ordinance numbering. And ordinances are laws, and the ordinance number is like a chapter in the Bible. It's not something you make an error with. And I don't know what the motivation is, or if there's some agenda. I'm not saying there is, but that's problematic when I read that, and it's like, well, what ordinance number is it? The other concern I have with the specific ordinance is where it specifically says in the ordinance itself, it says, "In the cases where the manuals lack guidance for a specific source of pollutants, the city shall work with the owner-operator to implement or adopt BMPs based on the best professional judgment of the city." And Mayor Markley and city council members, especially the newly elected members, I mean no disrespect, but the City of Gig Harbor has not demonstrated what I would consider sound judgment with respect to how storm water is managed and how it's handled and how pollutants are managed. And I sent all of you a photograph, actually two photographs this afternoon. And so I would ask that the council go back and reevaluate why there's three different ordinance numbers for a specific ordinance. And I would ask that there be some deliberation and discussion about this specific ordinance. And also, I would ask that the city, the city council members ask on the record why August 1st is the deadline. Like to know why that date, what specifically happened, who set that date, who put that deadline on the City of Gig Harbor to comply with. And I, again, thank you, Mayor Markley and city council for allowing me to speak this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wick. I don't usually respond to public comment. I will say that we will look into these ordinance numbers to make sure that everything is A-OK. I'm assuming this was just a typographical error. I don't know if Mr. Stecker has any comment to make in regards to that.
Mayor, this is ordinance 1490. There's a typo on the agenda that asks council to make a motion to approve 1488, but when council makes their motion, it should be to approve ordinance 1490.
Okay.
The council bill, I'm sorry, the council bill notes 1490 in the title and in the suggested motion, so.
Yes. Okay, so it's just, it's just on the agenda item that it's the incorrect ordinance number? Okay, so it's 1490. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I have the right copies of everything and was looking at everything correctly. Okay, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period, and I will open it up for council deliberation. Councilmember Wick.
Yes, thank you. This is a good ordinance, and I'm happy to see this come forward. I'm happy to see that we're going to have an inspection program and that we'll have a developed, and we'll develop an enforcement project policy with staff training. This is a good ordinance, and it has to do with clean water, of course, and the water that goes into our bay. It is important, and so I move to approve ordinance number 1490.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other council comments? Councilmember Barber.
Yeah, I just, I agree with what Councilmember Wick said. I think this is a really good ordinance. And the presentation that we heard from the public work staff was very thorough. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Langhelm, but this puts us in compliance with the State Department of Ecology, and the August 1st deadline is their deadline, not our deadline.
You are correct.
So I am totally in support of this.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, if you will all grant me a short two-minute recess, I would appreciate that. We will re-adjourn at 6:02. Thank you. And. All right, welcome back to the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of July 11th, 2022. The time is 6:05 PM. We are on new business item one, which I did read the wrong title of this the first time around. This is the first reading and adoption of ordinance 1490 relating to Stormwater Source Control Program for Existing Development contained in Gig Harbor Municipal Code Chapter 14.20. We have already received a motion and a second from Councilmember Wick and Councilmember Lykens. So I appreciate the public comment that was given, and we had opened it up for council deliberation. I didn't think there were any more hands, but council, if there are any other questions on this, go ahead and ask them at this time. Otherwise, I will entertain a vote. Okay, not seeing any hands raised. So motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Thank you so much, council. And so now we are moving on to new business item number two, which is the first reading of ordinance fourteen ninety-one. And this is grant, this is granting Verizon Wireless franchise. So this will return for a second reading, and this will also be our Public Works Director, Jeff Langham.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, as you saw in the council bill, this request is for authorization of a new franchise agreement with Verizon Wireless, so they can operate within the city's right-of-way as allowed by state and federal law. The city's own authority to grant franchises for use in city streets and public properties is contained within chapter twelve point one eight of the municipal code. The franchise you have before you tonight would allow Verizon to apply for the necessary permits to install, operate, and maintain their telecommunications facilities. This could include fiber optic cable, antennas, radios, and small wireless facilities. Verizon Wireless is an infrastructure provider that can provide facilities such as backhaul, which is the communication behind cellular equipment, small wireless facilities, as well as construct the infrastructure and operate and maintain the infrastructure. Additional permits are required beyond the adoption of a franchise. This could include encroachment permits with, in accordance with chapter twelve oh two of the municipal code and small wireless permits in accordance with twelve point twenty-two of the municipal code. Staff has worked the city attorney's office to prepare the attached ordinance and franchise agreement for consideration by council. And just as a reminder, the council did authorize a similar franchise to Exponent Systems through ordinance fourteen forty back in twenty twenty. That Exponent franchise agreement also allowed the installation of small wireless facilities. As part of the requirement within chapter twelve twenty-two of the municipal code, we do complete or provide a complete list of applications that have been submitted and are deemed complete to the city of Gig Harbor for small wireless applications. To date, we have none. But I am going to share my screen real quickly with you and just show you what that looks like on our website. So hopefully you can see my screen now. And this is, it's under Public Works under Engineering Division. There's a small wireless facilities web webpage, and it has all sorts of good information, frequently asked questions for the public and the providers. It lists the municipal code sections on one where the information is kept, the required documentation. And also down here, we have a table that shows complete applications for small wireless facilities. The name of the applicant, the email, the contact, phone number, and the date it's complete. But you can see there are no complete applications as of today. So the only thing I request on this is that this be back before council at the July twenty-fifth council meeting, but be placed on the consent agenda for second reading. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Any questions, clarifying questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I will open the public comment for this agenda item. Josh, were there any written comments received?
No written comments for this item.
Okay, anyone from the public wish to speak on this agenda item? Okay, seeing no hands raised, I will close the public comment period. And we will bring this back unless there's any other questions or comments from council. We will bring this back at the July twenty-fifth council meeting. Okay. Great. Moving on to new business item number three, this is the first reading of ordinance fourteen ninety-two related to advisory boards, commissions, and committees. And this report is our city clerk, Josh Sticker.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. This ordinance is brought to you for first reading. We discussed this at the June thirtieth City Council Study Session. One of the issues that's come up with council is the process of appointing citizens, residents to our advisory boards. There's been some back and forth on whether some of those should be mayor-appointed or council-appointed. In our study session, we discussed that because we are a code city, it seems like is likely that the city is required to have these committees be mayor-appointed. So the effect of ordinance fourteen ninety-two is that it changes the appointment process for the Parks Commission, Arts Commission, Design Review Board, and Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to change them from being council-appointed committees to mayor-appointed committees with each appointee requiring confirmation by the city council. That's the full extent of the ordinance. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great, thank you so much, Josh. Any clarifying questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I will open up the public comment on this agenda item. Josh, were there any written comments received for this item?
No comments for this item.
Okay. All right, anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item? You can press star nine on your phone or the raise hand button near the bottom of your screen. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment on this agenda item. And unless there are any other comments or questions, Councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you. Our Washington State Constitution says that it is not up to the government to tell our citizens what is good for them to know and what is not good for them to know. Tonight, this proposed ordinance is about how citizens are selected to sit on our volunteer boards and commissions. Currently, today, citizens who are interested in sitting on our boards and commissions make an application, and they are interviewed. Those interviews are immediately placed on our city website. The council views these interviews because it is our job to conform, confirm appointments to these boards and commissions. More importantly, every single Gig Harbor citizen can go to our website and can view these interviews. Today, this is a very transparent process. Transparency builds trust with our citizens. This proposed ordinance that we're looking at eliminates transparency and creates secret meetings. Secret meetings may be good enough for some cities, but it is not good enough for Gig Harbor citizens. About seven years ago, the city held some secret meetings, and our citizens found out about it, and they greatly complained. Those city secret meetings were stopped. Gig Harbor citizens deserve transparency. Today, this process is transparent. Gig Harbor City has always gone over and above to be open and transparent and not to hide anything from our citizens. Transparency builds trust. Secretly, secrecy destroys trust. The city of Gig Harbor has a two-year strategic plan. You will find that strategic plan on the agenda of every single council meeting. One of the strategic goals is to increase communication between the city and residents. Another one of those goals is to make city meetings more accessible to residents online. Eliminating transparency and turning it into secret meetings does not meet any of these goals. If this council is not willing to live up to these important words, then where is our credibility to our citizens? I do not support secret meetings. This proposed ordinance does not meet our strategic goals. It is wrong. It is not ready. Gig Harbor citizens deserve to be treated with respect and kindness and transparency and not secrecy. So I'm going to make a motion. I move that we send this ordinance back to the administration. And when it comes back, transparency to our citizens is now item number one. And citizens must have at least the same amount of transparency in any future ordinance about boards and commissions that they do today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wook. We have a motion. Is there a second? Okay, hearing none, Councilmember Denson. Councilmember.
Member Denson, you're on mute.
Thank you.
I just said something brilliant, too.
Of course.
No, I was just saying, I, I think I mentioned this at our study session when we talked about it. But I feel like Gig Harbor has a really long tradition of selecting our boards and commissions with a council committee. And actually, they're not making the selections. They're just interviewing folks and making a recommendation to the mayor. I think I've been on that committee for several years. And, you know, it was always my knowledge that we knew the mayor did not have to accept our recommendation. The mayor had the authority to accept our recommendation or to appoint someone else. But I think the council appreciated, you know, having the opportunity to to talk with the citizens and, you know, and acknowledge their interest in serving. And then, you know, make the recommendation that that we felt was was best for the community to the mayor. I don't know how long we've been doing that, but it seems like it's been a long time. Because when I came on board, Paul Cadick recommended that I choose that committee because it's one that he had always enjoyed serving on. And he was a council member for a long, long time. So I would prefer that we stick with it the way it is, knowing that the mayor does have the authority ultimately to to bring forward to the council who she or he would like. But starting with a council committee, which, you know, has been our tradition for a long time. So that would be my my preference to leave things the way they are. Thank you.
I think you, Councilmember Denson, Councilmember Rodenberg?
Yes, I, I never liked the idea of having three people on a committee that would choose the candidates for this to bring them to the mayor. I, I always felt like I was cut out of that particular process. So I, I don't, I don't support, I, I support the motion, not the motion, I'm sorry. I support the ordinance as it's been brought to us tonight.
I think you, Councilmember Rodenberg. I see Councilmember Starset has his hand raised in the attendees section.
Yes, thank you. So I just want to say that I agree with Lee's comments there. I agree that having three people that's on this committee, because we don't have a full commitment from all seven members to be able to do it. I don't feel that it would always be fair and a consensus of the the whole council. Even though Mayor Markley would still have final say, I think it could create some, some difference, right? If a recommendation's being made, but she doesn't see it as the best fit, I would prefer that we go to potentially something where those interviews are being done. We're able to, you know, still provide our feedback to the mayor, but trust that that she would make the the right decision. And we still have to approve. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Starset. City Attorney Daniel Kenny?
I just wanted to make sure that we're all clear on what's before council tonight. Before council tonight is an ordinance that makes three to five word changes in a few different sections. It is not the policy that the mayor would use to go through any sort of appointment process, and it would reserve confirmation for council. This has nothing to do with meetings. That that is not a fair representation of what's before you. And all of the comments so far are trending away from the agenda item. So I just want to make sure that we do focus on what's before council tonight. There's legitimate conversations all the way around on those topics, but that's not what's on the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Daniel. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I agree with Mr. Danny. The, there's a note in our agenda packet that you, I believe the administration could be setting up some more protocols on this. So I, I, I think, I think it's correct that we're just voting on getting our ordinance in place that you perhaps will be coming up with some more procedures that will allow more transparency. Is that, is, am I correct in that assumption?
Yes, you are. Councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to see the transparency written into the ordinance. This ordinance takes away interviews. As far as I know, there are not going to be any interviews, and they're certainly not going to be promoted, posted online, and our citizens will have no idea what's going on. And that's what this ordinance, that's the actual outcome of this ordinance.
Councilmember Barber.
I guess I, I did not see this as removing transparency. I am in agreement with what City Attorney Kenny said. I, I see this as setting our advisory boards to be in compliance with the codes that we need to be using as well. So I, I think when we see the, the, the policies coming from the mayor is when we're looking at the process. And I also will add that I am not a fan of the three-member committee because it excludes the other four members of the council.
Thank you, Councilmember Barber. Councilmember Lichens.
Yes, I just wanted to say I agree with the comments that Daniel said about this is just changing. I didn't see anything that removed transparency in my reading. You know, and if when the guidelines are made between mayor and staff that look at the process, I agree that having everybody have a say with the seven member is, it just feels like we're all engaged. And we still, you know, confirm these nominees. So it's mayor-appointed and council confirmed. But as far as the transparency goes, correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't see anything that, any wording, any changes that directly removed transparency. Maybe, Daniel, you could discuss that just again real quickly.
Well, I mean, I, I'll, I'll leave the discussion to transparency to to you all. I'll just point out that the sections that are revised are legislative changes. So everything is strike through and underline. And so you can see everything that was removed and everything that was added. There is no process in the current code, outlined in the current code for any of, any meetings, interviews, transparency-related items. And the only things that were added are mayor, mayor-appointed, council confirmed. And so the only changes are those. There's no removal of interviews, meetings, process, or anything. There's also no addition of that either. It's simply outlining the first step and second step. How those steps follow through is what the mayor will be providing to you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, in, in our study session, when we discussed this, we talked about committees, no committees, seven people on a committee, all council on a committee, the mayor choosing, mayor not choosing. And after all that talk was done, Mayor Markley kind of summarized things, I think, just off the top of her head. And her summary really made sense. And I think that if those are the procedures that we could build on to come up with it after we've done this, then I'm confident that the new process will be transparent and will make everyone happy. So I, or, and informed. So again, I, I support the ordinance certainly because it has nothing to do with procedures.
Thank you, Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kenny, for, for clarifying that. And, and as I'm looking at it again, I can clearly see the changes that are being made, and it doesn't have to do anything with procedure. And as Councilmember Rodenberg just pointed out, I think, I think Mayor Markley has heard us loud and clear about, you know, our interest in these commissions and, and having a procedure that, yeah, we're, we just want to be engaged, and we care a lot about these commissions. So like Councilmember Rodenberg, I have confidence that those procedures will, will reflect that. So I'm, I'm comfortable with this now. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Kootson.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, we very much value all of your input as we're looking to craft the policies and procedures for these interviews. If you individually have recommendations on what you would like for us to consider for them, please feel free to send those to City, City Clerk Josh Decker and myself, and we'll be sure to work with the mayor. We very much value your input, and we want to make this a process that, again, is transparent, is available, and helps the community have the best process possible. So we're, we're currently working on a draft of those procedures, and they're not finalized yet. So your input is always welcome.
Yes, thank you. Uh, let's see. If there is no other council deliberation, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, this ordinance will return.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is returned on second reading. Um, I'm sorry. And, and honestly, I'm a little, I'm a little flustered by the commentary this evening on this. I have absolutely every desire to be transparent with our citizens, so I just want to make that very clear. And this will come before you with your input being included into how these advisory boards are going to be. You know, how people will be chosen for these advisory boards. The process may look a little different depending on which commission it is because they all operate very differently. But we will have this coming before you very shortly and can have a further discussion. But as City Administrator Knutson said, please send us your wishes, desires for how you would like to see this process happen. I really am interested in your input, desire, your input and want this to be fair and equitable for all of you, for our citizens, for our applicants that are going to be wanting to step up to serve and volunteer. It means a lot to me that we have amazing people in our community that do want to volunteer. So I am looking forward to bringing this back to you and we will have some procedures for you next time. So with that, we will move on to our final agenda item. This is authorization for city website enhancements. And the suggested motion is to move to authorize the mayor to execute annually renewing agreements with Civic Plus for C Click Fix with Marketplace app and AudioEye website features. And this report is also from our City Clerk Josh Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I am pleased to present tonight two proposals that we have from our website provider, which is Civic Plus. We've been with Civic Plus for about four years. Civic Plus has a whole catalog of additional features that you can add on to their website that we have explored in the past, but have never moved forward with. Tonight, we have two features that we would like to get council's approval for us to add to our website. And I think there are two features that we've heard from council that they're really hoping that we could roll out probably sooner than we have. But I'm going to show you really quickly here Pierce County's website. Pierce County is on the same website platform that we are with Civic Plus. And they have enabled these features. So I'm going to show you what it looks like on their website really quick. Hit it to work. There we go. Okay, so this is Pierce County's C Click Fix webpage. And C Click Fix is a add-on service that provides citizen engagement, concern reporting, issue reporting, really any kind of contact that our residents want to make with us. They can do using this, this platform, which is fully customizable. So you can see this is Pierce County's Public Works C Click Fix page. And you can see the different options that they have here that you can click on to submit a concern. So if it's a dead animal on the road or a fence repair, there's vegetation issues, graffiti issues, there's any kind of issue that our residents can find, they can report that directly on this app. This platform integrates directly with Cartograph, which is what our Public Works folks use on their backend to keep track of all the tasks and issues that they have. So it seamlessly connects our Public Works crews with anything that our residents want to report. So I know I've heard from several council members over the past couple of years that this is something that they would really like to see the city have. And I think now we are ready to roll this out. The second part of the C Click Fix platform that we are really excited about too is that it has included with a designated mobile application for the city that we can add on. It's an additional fee, which is shown on the, the fee chart that came with the agenda bill. But it basically gives us a city of Gig Harbor app that anyone can download from any app store, whether it's iPhone or Android. And that app functions basically just like this website for Pierce County. But it also has the additional feature of being able to clone a lot of the things that are on our regular website. So, you know, department information, council meeting news, alerts. It can send out push alerts to anyone who has the app on their phone. This is a feature that our Tourism and Communications Director Laura Pettit has really been advocating for us to get because it's something that a lot of people really rely on. So that's an additional feature that we are proposing that we get as part of the price quote that you see with the agenda bill. Those two things together, I think, are really going to greatly enhance our outreach and our communication and the ability of our residents to contact us. The second part of this that I want to show you really quickly is a program called AudioEye. AudioEye is really enhancing our capabilities and services for people with accessibility needs. On Pierce County's website, I don't know if you can see really well, but down in the lower left corner, there's this little icon. This is the international accessibility icon. This is, this is AudioEye on their website. So if you click on that, it pops up this menu, which will be really familiar to anyone with accessibility issues. It gives them a broad range of, of tools that they can use to make, to enhance our website. It can increase text size just by clicking a button for people that have a hard time reading on screens. It can change the contrast of the screen. This is really helpful for people that have issues like color blindness or other vision issues. There's a whole host of, of changes that, that people can make based on their accessibility needs. That's one feature of the AudioEye program. Probably more importantly though, is that AudioEye audits our website to make sure that everything on our website is compliant. This basically meets the standards that people with accessibility needs need to have us meet. They actually have a team of people that have accessibility needs that review their, the websites for their clients. And they manually will review those and make sure that each page is working. So it's not just a, a computer that's running through and checking for, for errors. It's actual people with accessibility needs that know what they're looking for and can make those fixes. The AudioEye program will automatically make a lot of changes for us. So it's not like they're giving us a list of things that staff has to go in and fix. They have the ability to fix things and they know how to do that, so that they will actually go in and do that for us. And then the other component of this is that there is the potential for cities and government organizations to face litigation if their sites are not accessibility compliant enough. AudioEye will basically certify us for that. So that if we ever do find ourselves in a litigation situation like that, they will provide our coverage for that and they will represent us. So those are some really valuable features and it's, it's not a whole lot of money. It's about three or $4,000 a year. So we'd like to get council's approval to sign on for this, too. So if there are any questions about these new add-ons, happy to answer them. I am planning, if we do go forward with this and implement it, I do plan to come back to council and give you a, a full demo of what it looks like on our website. So, yeah, any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great, thank you so much, Josh. Councilmember Look.
This is great. So I've been trying to get a complaint form for four years and I sure like the name of this a lot better than complaint form. So, so this is really wonderful. I think our citizens are going to be thrilled. Is there any way that we can put on here? I don't think it's on the website now where citizens can find out where there is ADA parking downtown. Is that a possibility anywhere?
Uh, that maybe, I don't know if this is the right platform for that, the C Click Fix. It's more of a way to reach out individually to us or, or get a response from us. We do have an accessibility page for the city that we need to get updated and maybe that's where that information will go.
That'd be great.
Yeah, there, there's a link right at the bottom of our website. And if you have accessibility needs, then you pretty much know that down at the bottom of everyone's website somewhere, there should be a designated accessibility link. So that would be the first place that people should go, I think, to look for something like that and we can get that added to that.
That'd be perfect. Thanks so much. Great idea.
Thank you, Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. I'm really, really excited about both of these programs. I don't think that'll surprise any, anyone on, at this meeting. I'm especially excited about AudioEye. Having worked on website development in the past, I know how important it is. And I think it's really wonderful that this is a, a backend system that will automatically fix things for us. Right? That is wonderful because the automation means that our staff don't have to spend the time on it and it will be a better tool for everyone. And I should say, I have a couple of questions and then I'm asking one on behalf of Councilmember Henderson as well. So I got extra time here. Um, so City Clerk Decker, did you say this is only available for Public Works? Or is there a way that we can tailor some questions that would apply to other departments as well?
It's very customizable. So any kind of contact that we want, it's essentially, we can set it up so that whoever submits a comment is going straight to somebody's email inbox if we want to. So we can even have a box that says, you know, send a comment to the city council and we can have it automatically generate something to all of you. It, it's, it can be used for all kinds of purposes.
Is Pierce County using it for more than Public Works?
I believe, I believe they are. I haven't explored too much what they're using it for. They actually have, I think, two or three different systems that they use. They have a separate one for code enforcement. And I don't, we can explore using this for code enforcement for our purposes, but it may or may not be the best use for that. But there, there's, there's many different ways that it can be customized.
Great. And then my last question is with regard to staff capabilities and capacity, I'm concerned that if we start to get a bunch of complaints that come in on this, do we have the capacity, and this may be a question for City Administrator Knutson, do we have the capacity to be able to answer all those questions? And I know that that hopefully will improve over time, but I'm, I'm concerned about taking, taking someone away from repairing a pothole to answer somebody to say that they see that the pothole needs to be repaired.
So just, I'll let Ms. Knutson jump in too. But one of the benefits of C Click Fix is that when issues are reported geographically, like there's a pothole on Grandview, that will show up as a GIS reference point on C Click Fix. So the next time someone comes in to report an issue, that will take them straight to the map and they can see, oh, that pothole's already been reported. So it may cut down a little bit on, on our response time because people will be able to see if their issue is redundant or not and find out where.
That's amazing.
Yeah. And they can also piggyback on to somebody else's request and get notified as well as the person that, that submitted the request. So that may be a little bit of staff savings, but it may also trigger people to submit more concerns than we're getting currently.
Great. I'm really excited about this. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions from council or comments from Director Langham? I saw you unmuted for a minute. Did you have something that you wanted to, to add?
Well, sure. Thank you, Mayor. I, I was just going to note that it, when we have been reviewing the C Click Fix and all of some other options, it sounds like we can gather data for information that's submitted. So we'll be able to track, since it does also coordinate with our Cartograph Asset Management System, working with Mike Simmons and GIS to see how we can track data, to see how much time and effort we are spending on this app itself.
Great. Um, any other clarifying questions from council? Councilmember Look.
And so will, can the citizens then sign up to be notified when their concern has been handled?
Yes.
Yep, that's what I was gathering. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I see no other hands, so I will open up the public comment on this agenda item. Josh, were there any written comments received?
None on this side.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this agenda item? Okay, seeing then, I will close the public comment and we will move on to council deliberation. Who came first, Councilmember Look?
Yes, I move to authorize the mayor to execute annually renewing agreements with Civic Plus for C Click Fix with Marketplace app and AudioEye website features.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, great. If there are no other questions from council, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstained? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Thank you so much, council. This is going to be a wonderful thing for our community and we're so excited to get this started. So yay, this is so great. Okay, so we will move on to council reports and comments. Councilmember Look.
Yes, thanks. I just want to give a great big shout out to Public Works and the Operations Department. I think it was about a week, the week before July 4th that one of our citizens wrote in to us with his concerns about the light in the lighthouse not working. And, and Director Langham was on it, lickety-split and, and was repaired and it's working. And he let our citizen know. So thanks for that quick work.
Awesome. Yes, thank you so much, Jeff. That was, that was very quick, quick response. Councilmember Storset.
Yes, thank you. Now that you guys can hear me, just wanted to go back to the proclamation that was made to the Gig Harbor Sportsman's Club. Just wanted to echo the mayor's comments as well as Councilmember Rodenberg. I've been going to the Gig Harbor Sportsman's Club since I was 13 years old, took my first gun safety course there. I still have the orange card and then a very worn out piece of paper. And I've gone back since then and I remember my entire family is a member. It's very fun. It's very safe and they do a great job supporting local events. One, as everybody knows, I'm on the Permission to Start Dreaming Board and I direct Poll for a Soldier. It's been a very successful event. They bring about 50 volunteers out. Like anybody that is less experienced, they offer opportunities for coaching and then we'll be with you during it. It is incredibly safe. They also do the Rockin' Rhythm and Blues, which I think we've set a date for now, but it's August 13th. Check it out. But it's really cool. They host it there, live dance. Councilmember Rodenberg got up and spoke to the crowd, both as a council member and as a past president. Very cool community and love what they do for us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, applause, applause. Any other council reports or comments? Okay, seeing then, we have our announcement of, of upcoming meetings. We have our city meeting schedule attached to this agenda. And as always, the city of Gig Harbor two-year strategic plan is included as well. So if there is nothing else for the good of the order, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Getting adjourned. Enjoy this beautiful evening, everybody.
Good luck, Roger.
Thank you.
Good night.